Good evening. Now I'd like to bring the regular evening meeting of Towne-Tribune-Langley Council to order. And before I ask for motion to receive the agenda items and adopt them, I would like to just welcome the nursing students from Quatlin Polytechnic University and Connie Klimick. So, welcome here.[17.51][17.51][applause] Okay, with that, I will ask for motion to adopt or receive the agenda items. And, well, hang on, one more thing. We have to add, there are two late additions for delegations, D three and D four, Linda Nash and Nathan Jones. So with that, motion from Councillor Davis, second, by Councillor Fox, all those in favor, opposed and carried. Next item is a motion to adopt the minutes of regular evening council meeting of May the seventh. Can I have a motion? Councillor Whitmarsh, second, by Councillor Arnesson. Any errors or omissions? All those in favor, opposed and carried. There are no presentations. We move directly into delegations. And D one is Mr. Brad Toons from Play Society, P L A Y. Please come forward. Thank you. And just for the delegation's information, you have five minutes, so there'll be flashing lights in front of you to let you know when it's all getting close to the end.
I love it.
Good. Yeah, you betcha. And if you just, for the record, provide your name and an address for the clerk. Thank you.
Five minutes. Brad Toons. From Play Society. Thank you to Mr. Mayor and the council for allowing me the opportunity to come and chat with you guys about our society. This is just a general overview. I just wanted to present to you guys kind of what we're all about and what we've been doing over the last few years. So we are Play Society, so we are a not-for-profit organization that provides affordable and professional drama and musical theatre programming to local children and families. We were created because of a generous donation from the Barbara Howard Student Arts Program in 2014. And if we have time at the end, anyone ask me about that? It's a really nifty story, actually. Our classes never exceed $5 an hour. When we first created the programming, we did a lot of polls and questioned a lot of local families and asked them what they deemed was affordable programming for everyone. And they came up with $5 an hour. So that's what we stick with. We have a scholarship program in place to ensure that no child is ever denied arts programming because of financial reasons. Any kid that needs a spot in the arts gets one, and we make sure of that. We provide classes throughout the year at different locations. During the school year, we host after-school and evening classes. And then during the breaks, we offer week-long camps. So, like during the winter break, we'll offer a week-long winter camp, spring break, summer, et cetera. What we do, we work with different communities and facilities to ensure that classes are accessible and always available. So we try to make sure that we have classes throughout Langley, the northern-south area of Langley. We partner with the Langley Fine Art School to provide winter, spring and summer camps so that the kids get to go and be at a professional stage throughout the entire week, for the whole week. So it's a nice partnership that we have with them. It's really nice. All of our classes finish with a performance, filled with lights, sounds, the whole nine yards, and we don't charge the parents to come and watch the show. So the Langley Fine Arts has 330 seats, and so the kids can bring as many friends and family as they want to the show at no additional cost. Our classes have a maximum of 12 children per teacher, just to ensure that every child gets the part that they kind of want and has some one-time with the teachers. We provide scholarships to any family that may not be able to afford the classes, and we recognize the students that have used our classes to the fullest. Brooklyn Flores was a 10-year-old girl that was in our program. Really quick, she passed in a car accident during one of our programs while she was just leaving for spring break. And we have created the scholarship in her name because she came to our classes super shy and super quiet. And when she passed, she was one of the leaders in the class. She was one that we really looked up to, and we always have a scholarship program in her name. Why we do what we do, every child has the rights to the arts, which is why we do it. I'm going to keep going because I know only have five minutes. Children need somewhere to let their imagination and creativity go wild. Musical theatre classes and theatre classes help kids express themselves, meet new kids, confidence. They need to succeed. Our classes are low-stress, focused on fun and interaction with others on the stage. And we know that theatre is not for everyone. Some kids like sport, some kids like technology, and that's fine. But we want to make sure that theatre kids and kids that want access to the arts, it's there, and that's why we're there. Quick, our numbers. Our first class was in August eight, or August of 2014. We registered eight kids in our summer camp. By the end of 2014, we had 11 kids register. They stuck with us. Parents spread the word. In 2015, we hosted two weeks of summer camps. We had 40 kids join us. In 2015, we registered a total of 142 kids. In 2016, we expanded again. We have a partnership with the new owners of the Greater Vancouver Zoo, School District 42 and 43. We had 457 registrations in 2016. 2017 brought more students, another week of summer camps in Pitt Meadows. In 2017, we registered 498 students. We expect to just do over 500 this coming year. We've actually slowed down our registration because of, it's been going too fast, and we ran out of the funding that we got in 2014 from the Barbara Howard Student Arts Program. Our goal is to continue to do what we do. I know my five minutes is up, and I apologize for that, but that's what we want to do. Make sure that we're still doing what we do, make programs accessible and affordable for everybody in Langley. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Phew, I got through it.
Sounds like, that was fast.
I got through as much as I could.
You got through it all? Yeah, you actually had another 30 seconds, flashing lights.
Oh, I have 30 seconds!
Yeah, well, you can speak a little more if you want.
I love it! We're never going to go above $5 an hour. That's something that we truly believe in. It seems like it's an affordable, not just for those who may have financial, you know, walls, but, you know, also for those that have a little bit of extra income. We want to work with the communities, which is why I came here today, to make sure that you guys know about us and everybody knows about us, that, you know, what we're doing. Langley's our home base. We started here, and like 70% of our registration comes from Langley. It's exciting. Do you guys have any questions?
Yes, we do.
I love it.
Thank you very much. Just, I have a quick question.
Yeah.
The, obviously lots of staff, a lot of people have to help. Are they volunteers and paid or both, a mix?
No, so our staff are paid. So we do have volunteer staff, the high school students or students that are kind of aged out of our program, want to come back and be like a support. But, no, insider mandate, it says that all of our staff are paid, either university students or just leaving university, either in the field of working in the theatre or working with children.
Okay, great, thanks. Councillor Sparrow has a question.
Yeah, just to, thank you so much for coming. Just a quick question for those maybe in the audience and watching. How would one find you? Do you have a website or?
Yeah, so we're in the Student Success Magazine, which goes out to every student in the Langley School District. So we have, our information is all in there. We have a website, we have Facebook, we have Instagram, we have all that jazz. So it's, if you look, you should be able to find us.
A plug to your website address?
PlaySociety.ca. No dots, just P L A Y, Society.ca.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Great.
And then info@PlaySociety.ca if you want to send us some mail.
Great. Thank you so much for coming.
Absolutely.
Thank you. I don't have any other questions, so thank you very much. Great presentation.
Perfect. Thank you very much, Mayor and Council. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay. Next delegation is Mr. Brady Lumsden. Please come forward.
Good evening, Mayor and councillors. So my name is Brady Lumsden. I am a grade 11 student in Walnut Grove Secondary School, and I have lived in Langley for the past six or seven years. Weekend Fuel Bag is a program that I started with my two cousins a year and a half ago when we saw a need. We had a friend who came and approached us and said, each weekend, he was going home, and the only thing he had to eat was one cliff bar a day, and that was all. I lived in Vietnam for a year, and I experienced poverty, not firsthand, but I was able to witness its effects on families, friends, communities. And when I came back to Canada, I had no idea that poverty existed here as well. I had no idea that in B.C., one in five children are going home to poverty. In Canada, 1.2 million children are suffering through Canada, through poverty. Now, these are amazing figures that nobody hears about and nobody knows. And why is that? And when my friend told me this, we knew that he was on the breakfast and lunch program at schools. So we thought, well, isn't that enough to get you through to the weekend and get your parents to pay for food or go to a food bank for you? But it wasn't. His parent, single-parent family was working a minimum-wage job, going to food banks as much as she could, but it still wasn't enough. So myself and my two cousins, who also went to school in Langley, decided we can create change, we can do something. We canvassed local stores, grocery stores, any stores, and said, we have this idea. We want to give students food every weekend. After a lot of no's and a lot of resiliency and perseverance, we finally got one yes. But after we went through a little bit of a struggle, the Langley Times and Langley Advance picked us up and said, we'll give you some publicity, we'll shout out to the community and see who can help, who can keep this program going. In the past year and a half, we've been able to raise $80,000 to fund the 80 students that we have on the program currently. Every single weekend, we have it organized so that Savon Foods delivers the food, bags, unbagged food, to each of the nine schools we have on the program. At the school, leadership students, leadership classes, take the food, pack it into bags, give it to the councillors or the youth care workers, and then the youth care workers and councillors give it to the students. So the program is completely anonymous, and there are actually students in the schools helping their peers, helping their friends. Now, we've been running for the past year and a half, and we've grown from 15 students with about $45 a week to now we help 81, and we spend almost $900 a week. Now, this program has grown amazing amounts in the past year and a half, but there is so much need. In Langley, the same stat continues, there are one in five children who are living in poverty. And I guarantee, I guarantee, in the schools, in the community, there's less than 50% of people who know that. Now, what our mission is, what Weekend Fuel Bag strives to do, is give these children, give these people a chance. They didn't choose to be in poverty. They didn't choose to have the parents they do or live in the situations that they do. But we want to give them the choice, allow them to choose better education, allow them to choose a better future for themselves. A student who doesn't have food from kindergarten to grade 12 loses four years of education. You're not graduating grade 12 with a degree, you're graduating with a grade eight knowledge. How many minimum-wage jobs can you keep with that knowledge? How well can you do in life when that's all you have? Hunger creates physical problems, creates mental health problems, cognitive problems, social problems. People who are hungry are actually more likely to be bullies and to end up bullying other students because of what they're going through. Now, our impact, what we do, is we allow students to take this extra food, take the food they're receiving from the schools and on the weekend and over the breaks. One of the things that's unique about our program is we run 52 weeks a year. So even in the summer break, winter break, spring breaks, students are still getting big bags of food that they can take home. And we want to allow these children to succeed in life. Take this investment of food and pay it forward. Do better in education, do better in school, get a better job, do better for the future so you can really create the change that we all know needs to happen in B.C. and Langley in Canada. One of the testimonials we received, I was actually on the phone last night with a mother of some, a student who was on the program, and she said, I don't know what I would do without these programs that the school offers. I don't know what I would do without the Weekend Fuel Bag program. Not having to worry about food throughout the week, that's good, but every weekend I'd still have to worry, how many, you know, cans of soup can I get for my son? But she was able to, with the Weekend Fuel Bag program, allow more than just a can of soup, give fruit, give fresh bread, toast, everything that that son needed to do better in school. This mother is now attending KPU for accounting, whereas she was just working a minimum-wage job trying to get through for the past five or six years. Our vision is we want to raise another $400,000 in the next year to help expand to so many more students in Langley. We are in nine of the 11 high schools and middle schools, and there are so many elementary schools that are also not a part of any program to receive food over the weekends. There are areas in poverty with a child poverty rate as high as 45%, and they receive nothing. So what we want to do is not donate to these students, not receive donations and just give food away, but we are investing into youth, investing into the future. Youth are 20% of the population now, but they are 100% of the future. And that is why they are so, so important. An investment in them now will create change that will last forever. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sounds like a great program. I've heard you speak before about it, so fantastic program.
Are there any questions I can answer?
I don't have any questions from council.
And if anyone has a?
Oh, I do. Yeah. Councillor Sparrow.
It's not, it's not really a question, but I just, I had to say, that was fantastic. And your parents must be so proud of you with that. That was just a really, I mean, we hear a lot of people come and speak in front of us, and that was one of the most articulate, well-done, well-delivered delegations. So thank you for coming.
Well, thank you guys for having me. And if anyone is curious about how to learn more, we have a website. It's WeekendFuelBag.ca, and we have social media, just Weekend Fuel Bag. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Another councillor, I should speak to you. Councillor Arnesson.
Yes, thank you so much. I have to say Ted Talks come to mind. I really think you'd be a natural here, you know, you're very engaging and very passionate, obviously, and also very well-informed because that's the basis of what you're saying, is that we have all this information to know that unless people are getting an adequate amount of food, including the entire family, then we really are more or less sentencing children to not have a productive life like they could have with a good education and lots of rewarding opportunities to go forward that way. So I wondered actually if you were involved in any way in the poverty reduction strategy that we have. I know you're very busy with this particular program, but they are very integrated in the way that, in addition to addressing the actual food need, it's more systemic as an issue.
Yeah, I have recently been in touch and contacted the Poverty Reduction Coalition for British Columbia, so I have a meeting later in June with someone who's a part of that, and I'm going to see how we can incorporate our ideas.
Yeah, I think that'd be great. Okay.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you so much for presenting.
And may I speak to the audience as well?
I've got Councillor Fox on the list.
I will answer that first.
And.
Thank you, Brady, for coming. I just wanted to pick up on one thing, which you didn't mention, which I think is important, but you've got to qualify this first. So if an individual, corporate or individual person wants to make a donation to the Langley School District Foundation, they get a tax receipt?
They do. So all our funding, all our donations go through the Langley School District Foundation so that we are able to issue tax receipts because they are a registered charity.
But don't tell me, tell them.
Ah, we are able to issue tax receipts.[981.01][981.01][laughter]
Yeah, that's an important thing when somebody's considering giving, that they can get a tax receipt, and it works well. Thank you, and keep up the good work.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And to those behind me, everyone, if you don't have the ability to donate money, everyone can donate time, everyone can give back in some way. So if you have that ability, if you're in that place, make sure you do something to give back to the community you're in.
Great, thanks. Thank you very much.[1008.63][1008.63][applause] We have two more delegations, Linda Nash and Nathan Jones. And I don't know if you want, how to, because you're on the same topic, if you had a particular order you wanted to go in. Okay, so we'll go with Ms. Nash.
Mayor and council, my name is Linda Nash. I've lived in Walnut Grove 20 years, 28 years. I found that last speaker fascinating and inspiring, and yet at the same time, I realized that there was a common thread with our reason for being here, and that's the health of I stand before you to address the motion put forward by Councillor Qualley that council vote by July 23rd whether 216th South of 88th to Highway 1 be designated a truck route. To clarify, this is not about local trucks delivering groceries and such. How is it possible to make an informed decision this quickly? An informed decision is based upon a clear understanding of the facts, the implications and future consequences of an action. Why is this not possible? Number one, our community was promised a public hearing-style meeting. This happened when we were presenting a petition signed by 1,700 people opposing a truck route at this location. It is not realistic to expect everyone who wishes to speak to be available this quickly at this time of year. Summer is just around the corner, and many are busy with children finishing school or away on holiday. Number two, most importantly, we are still waiting for a health impact assessment being done by HAMERA. This report was ordered by the Minister of Transport. Because it is a joint venture and health guidelines specifically developed with CARE 2012 and 2014 were ignored with this project. Guidelines call for a large buffer zone, and there is none, leaving homes and schools only 25 feet from the road. Why is this report so important? The objective is to consider how the proposed project could affect health determinants and health-related outcomes in the vicinity of the project. There are four key areas of concern: air quality, noise, safety and walkability. I am submitting a copy of the terms of reference being used for this important report. The target date for completion of this report is July the 15th. However, there's always a possibility that this might change. Even if this vital report were available by July the 15th, there's still not enough time for all those involved to carefully and thoroughly review it and have a public meeting as well. Number three, I received a very interesting letter today. It came from the Director of TransLink, Jeff Busby. The technical review has been completed by Urban Systems that was commissioned by TransLink. And based on the findings, TransLink is unable to support the truck route removals proposed by the township. This means we'll still have truck routes in Fort Langley. Considering this, there's no reason to designate 216th North a truck route as well. To conclude, there's no urgency to make this decision. Why? This interchange is not opening until 2019. Therefore, I respectfully request that this vote be postponed until at least September.
Thank you. There's some questions from council. I just want to point out a couple of things. You mentioned that council had made a resolution regarding a public hearing-style meeting, and I believe that's still going to occur because this still has to come for bylaw at some point. So during that process, I believe that's what council had in mind. And the other one, you've got a report from TransLink, which is great because I haven't seen it, and I believe that the motion really is to ask for a report from our staff. We can't make decisions on it until there's bylaws in front of us. So there is going to be that public-style hearing, which council has approved, as far as I know, unless a future council changes that. But this council approved it when the bylaws come forward. So we're not asking for the bylaws to come forward. I think council is in the same position as you. We like to get some more information. And you mentioned that there is more information that you've seen, but it hasn't come to me yet, so we rely on our staff. So just wanted to point that out for you, that we're not rushing it either. Councillor Qualley.
So, am I correct to understand, Councillor Qualley, that you did not make a motion to have the council vote by July 23rd regarding this?
That's correct. The motion is for staff to make sure that the report came to council before July 23rd. That's what the motion says. There would be no vote before July 23rd. The motion says, therefore be it resolved, that staff make the matter a priority to provide a report prior to or at the council meeting on July 23rd. There would be no, there was never an intention of a vote at the July 23rd meeting.
I'm somewhat confused because today I received an email from you, and it indicated that it would be good to get things out of the way for the peace of mind of the schools, the residents, et cetera, before your summer break, and that would be July 23rd.
If I can just interject, the motion, and council hasn't considered it yet, comes later in the meeting, is to ask for a report. I think you're confusing with the bylaws. The bylaws to actually, any truck route designation has to be by bylaw, and so council would have to have those, staff would have to come back with the bylaws. We're not asking for the bylaws. This motion asks for a report. So that gives us some direction, or we can provide staff with some direction moving forward.
So do we have, does the community have any timeline as to when you plan to make this vote regarding 216?
Well, that's what we're, we're a council, we have to gather all the information and make some decisions here. It's obviously very important to you and to a lot of the community, and we want to make sure that we've, that we have done our due diligence. So all we're doing here is asking for a report at this point, and that will assist us in making, giving some direction with information, hopefully some new information that we're going to receive, that we can provide some direction. So of course, there's always input from the community, but you did mention specifically the public hearing-style meeting. That, as far as I'm concerned, is still on the books. Hopefully that helps answer your questions.
And I'm a little confused by the report. What is the report, the intention of that report?
It was information on where we are at this point with, and not just the truck route that, on 216th, but the truck routes that are being envisioned are being either applied for addition or applied for removal in the township. So it's not just 216th. We want to see the whole report. So hopefully that helps you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Nathan Jones.
Your worship, council, thank you very much. So I won't duplicate or replicate what Ms. Nash.
Just provide a name for the record.
Sorry. My name's Nathan Jones, resident of Walnut Grove, father, citizen, but certainly here as a parent. As you know, kids often ask those hard questions, like, why is the sky blue, and what is life all about, and why are the Canucks so bad? But I'm not here to ask you those hard questions. You did lend some clarity, although timelines are still a bit confusing for me. This report will be comprised of information from HAMERA, TransLink and others, is that correct?
Well, it's a staff report, so we'll, we have to wait for staff to provide an update. And it may not be complete. We may need more information, I don't know. We haven't seen a report yet. It's not even written yet, so.
So as I, as I bring my children along with this journey to explain how council works, how local politics works, I was at a loss to explain how council could provide a report without the full information, say, from HAMERA, health and safety, to provide that report to make that decision. So passing the sort of sensibility test of an eight-year-old, I was trying to explain to her again, how a report can be conducted by your staff with incomplete information coming from, what I understand is, HAMERA, again, the impacts on health and safety for the community as well. So if there's clarification on that, I'll leave that to the end. So I'm here really to question the motion, the timing as such, and in terms of the need for it right now to conduct this report. In addition, like to better understand that there'll be adequate time given to the tax-funded report given by HAMERA, that we're confident as citizens and residents that this will be given ample time for everyone to review and not just council as well to be disclosed. So in light of that, in light of TransLink's denial, Fort Langley's removal of the truck routes, it seems prudent course of action to take more time and consideration on this effort rather than try to rush it through in the next couple of weeks.
I don't see us rushing it through. I see us getting information as council. We need to see information in our staff or who we asked for to provide updates, and that's all we're, as I understand it, that's the intent of the motion that we'll be dealing with later on this evening. So I know there's been lots of concern that somehow this is being rushed through.
Right.
We're looking at getting some information, because I believe it's important, and it's important to everyone, so.
So do we. But in the absence of the third-party report, do you?
But we're not at that point of bylaw yet. See, before these truck routes can either be removed or added, it needs to go through a bylaw process. This isn't a bylaw process. We're still gathering information, so.
Understood, but that will be informed by this report, correct?
Of course, of course. Everything is one piece.
So if this report is?
It's a process that we're going through.
Okay, so this report isn't 100% in terms of information provided, would that not inform the?
I haven't seen it yet, so I don't know. It hasn't been written yet. There's, so, you know, we, we as council, if you're on a board of directors or anything else, you ask for information from staff, that's all this council, if this motion passes, is to ask for information. That's all we're doing, so.
I am.
That is our job to make sure.
I am on a board of directors, and I don't make decisions without complete information.
That's right, neither do we. So that's, hopefully that's understood.
Perfect.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so now we'll move on to bylaws for first and second reading. F1 is, sorry, you're troubling the light there. Okay, so I'll just, Counsel Whitmarsh having difficulty, this light is not working. No, it's not on. So you're good. No, you're good. Okay, so bylaws for first and second reading, rezoning community plan amendment, application number 100140, and development permit application 100846, Quadra Carvath. And Counsel Fox moves it. As a second, there's Counsel Sparrow. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, I'm going to call the question on F1. And that carries. Counsel Davis opposed. And move on to F2. Move on to F. And Counsel Whitmarsh.
Yeah, this one here, I'd just like to declare a conflict. So I'll step out.
Okay, so this is rezoning application number 100508, Trinity Western University, bylaw number 5369. Could I have a motion, please? Counsel Qualley, second by Counsel Sparrow. Any discussion on F2? Counsel Arneson.
Thank you, worship. I do have a couple of questions for you, worship, to staff. My first question is, if somebody from staff can please expand upon the current RU zoning and what is allowable. I see what was in the staff report and what's there, but what would the current zoning allow on this area?
Sarah Richardson.
Thank you, worship, through to Counsel Arneson. RU1 is a rural zone, which allows for agricultural uses and rural residential uses currently.
Okay, units per acre is sort of where I was going, I guess, with my question. Like density.
Through you, worship, to Counsel Arneson, so RU1 zone is a 1.7 hectare or 4.2 acre minimum lot size. It allows one dwelling unit, up to two dwelling units if it meets the requirements of agricultural land reserve for being a bona fide farm.
Okay. I just, I guess the secondary question, so it says in the staff report about the size of the buildings. I'm just wondering, is there any way that we could combine the footprints there to get an understanding of what the total density would be for this area? With both uses?
Through you, worship, to Counsel Arneson, as indicated in the conceptual plans that are provided in the report, there's a one-six-story building, a combined academic and residential use proposed. Currently, we don't have the specific building plans for that. Right now, it's just in concept, and right now, it's just a rezoning to allow for a residential use consistent or a university use, P3, which allows for instruction and for student residences.
Okay, thank you. I just have a comment. I'm very supportive of the expansion of the educational infrastructure, but I'm not very comfortable with doing this without having an overall holistic plan for the area. I've mentioned this before, and so I'm wondering, through you, worship, to staff, when are we planning on doing a more comprehensive infrastructure plan for this specific area in the university district? Do we have a timeline?
Mr. Backen.
Your worship, the reference to the plan is primarily for the properties, I guess, west of Glover Road. This is a remnant piece from the university itself, and would be, I guess, notionally considered in the context of the university's master plan, which is not a zoning document. It's a master plan for the university itself. So this is sort of a remnant, an historical remnant. As to the servicing, the servicing issues for this site, I think, are handled by our existing capacities. As we continue with the development of the district, again, to the west of Glover, that's where we think there may be some need for a plan. Our impediment for dealing with a plan in that area is only that there's about, I'm going to say 10 to 15 acres that could be planned at this point. That is because, while the road has been extended east or north and south of the new Labonte Extension, most of those lands remain in the agricultural land reserves. So a more fulsome planning process would be subject to bylaws being approved by the ministry until we're at a position where we can remove that land or get non-farm use permits for it, and that isn't on the immediate horizon. So the short answer is, until the circumstances align a bit better, we don't have a defined timeframe for that more elaborate planning process.
Thank you.
Just to follow up on that, what is the designation, the designation of this area under the official community plan is the university district? Is that correct?
Effectively, that's correct. When we take the remnant pieces out, this was effectively going to be, had a different name at the time, but it's really the, in the rural plan and the Langley official community plan, it was recognized as being the site of the university.
Okay, thank you. And it's not in the ALR?
This parcel is not in the about, or the three parcels to the immediate west of Glover Road or not, but the remainder, as one goes up towards 216th, is.
Okay, thanks. Counsel Davis.
Thank you. Just a quick question while we have this map on here. This remnant piece over by the lake, the man-made lake, is that, that's, is that a non-conforming piece of property?
That little tiny triangle?
Yeah, that little triangle. That's going to be changed to, will that be changed to, to P3?
Are we discussing the area in red?
Yeah, the area in red, the big area in red, but if you go across where the security shack is and where the man-made lake was made, the lake, right there in the corner there.
There's a remnant piece.
Yeah.
And that goes back to when the titles were first formed and the university was combined. So that little remnant piece, along with the bigger red piece, are a different, I guess, parcel. And as such, then, the whole entire parcel is being rezoned. So that little remnant, then, would be subject to the P3 zone. It's debatable, though, if that area would have a building footprint because of the setback requirements from the wetland. Just as when one looks at the larger triangle, much of that area is consumed by a wetland area as well. So there would be setbacks. So effectively, we're talking about the area where there appears to be a parking lot, maybe a little bit more to the west of that is the area where the structure would have to go.
Yeah, but the zoning will be on, is that considered one piece?
It's one title. So the little remnant you're talking about is part of the same title, so that's why it's shown. There'll never be anything built on there, as Mr. Backen says.
Okay, and also you've mentioned that it's in the wetlands, because it is close, very close to the Salmon River.
Right, so the entire parcel, then, west of the tracks, south of the freeway, east of Glover, then, with this change, will effectively all be P3 or some equivalent for university designation. This was a piece the university acquired several years ago, and there was no official zoning change to it.
Okay. This is going to public hearing, but I look at it, and it is, it's really close to Highway 1. That's not going to be an issue, other than trucks jaking on their way down and getting revved up to go up the other side, but I don't have to, I don't have to live there. But I just also, if it gets changed after it goes to public hearing, if it gets changed, the zoning gets changed to P3, how, it'll be, it'll be P3 as long as Trinity has it. It's not that this is associated to a, to a building permit.
Effectively correct. The P3 designation exists regardless of the ownership. There's other parcels that are P3 in the township, because it represents an institutional zoning that in the context of the university district equates it to being used for university purposes. So other uses, as we referenced, could be other sorts of institutional uses that may exist. But this is a non-specific zoning as to ownership. This would be something that would remain under the P3 designation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question on F2. Hang on, I'm going to cancel the vote. I got to put Counsel Whitmarsh absent. Okay, so I'll call the question again. If you could please vote again. Thank you. I've, I've, I just called it again. I had to change the, had to put Counsel Whitmarsh. And it carries unanimously. And if we could ask Counsel Whitmarsh to come back, I'll put him back in attendance. Okay, so now we move on to F3. This is Maryville Community Plan Amendment and rezoning application number 100148, and heritage alteration permit application number 100893, bylaw 5351, bylaw 5352, and bylaw 5353. Could I have a motion, please? Counsel Fox, second by Counsel Whitmarsh. Discussion on F3. Counsel Qualley.
Thank you. I'd just like to add another condition, based on some of the feedback we've heard from the neighbors before this goes to public hearing. And, sorry, I'm just looking for my notes. The condition is that the parking lot that's still subject to this application not be located in the southeast corner of the park. So there's some significant trees in that area, and that's closest to the homes, so.
Is there a second to the amendment? Counsel Whitmarsh seconds it. It's on. For discussion, Counsel Fox.
It is the Denny Ross Park. Thank you. Oh, sure. So the condition is that the parking lot not be located in the southeast corner of the Denny Ross Park.
Okay, so, okay, any discussion on that amendment? Seeing none, I'll call the question. The amendment carries with Counsel Arneson opposed, so we're back to the main motion as amended. Counsel Arneson.
Yes, thank you, worship. After reading the staff report and also talking to some of the residents in the community more broadly, I think, than just the ones that were originally concerned about where the parking space was going to be, I am rather concerned that this is going through the process without any kind of reference to where the parking lot is going to be. So I understand it's a condition that at some point in the future, once we do first and second, that there will be an opportunity to engage the public and discuss it. But I don't really think that that's the appropriate way to handle the parking. There's 30 parking spaces. My concern is, is that in trying to relocate 30 cars, which is not an insubstantial number, that it will cause perhaps divisiveness in the neighborhood. I don't know where those cars are going, but I want to move that this be referred back to staff and that that decision be made before it comes back for first and second reading.
Is there a second to the referral? Okay, Counsel Davis seconds it, so discussion on the referral. I've read the report, and I'm quite satisfied that the process that's in place will be sufficient to relocate the park, or not relocate, to create the parking that's necessary to support that park. And with Counsel Qualley's motion, I think some, I heard, well, I don't think, I know, I heard a lot of concerns from residents on the first draft of what the parking lot was going to be, and I think that ensures that it won't be there. So definitely need to have parking there. We can't have a park without parking, so I'm not going to support that. Counsel Arneson.
Well, just to reiterate, I think it's highly irregular from my perspective. I've only sat here for three and a bit years, but I have never seen an application come forward that's taken a very integral part of the plan and have it as a secondary condition to this. I don't think that this is a good way to go about planning where it's going to be. And I'm sure we're going to hear from the residents, and I'm not necessarily sure the only residents we're going to hear from are the ones that are referred to in the amendment. So I think that it, due diligence requires that we find out where we are anticipating putting those cars, because I think if it was an easy fix, we would have done it already. And I don't think it's good planning to do it after the fact.
Thank you. Counsel Fox.
Yeah, thank you. The only thing that I would say is, obviously, what staff is looking at in the context of this park, parking lot relocation, is to not, to do the least amount of damage or adjustment to the already existing amenities in there. For example, you can see in this picture, there's a big baseball diamond. There is a water pump house there. Those kinds of things can't be moved, so obviously, there's limited amount of space that they can use. So although I've seen a couple of conceptual opportunities, I'm sure that this could be resolved fairly quickly to the, to the satisfaction of the homeowners and other park users. You can notice in this picture, there's a lot of cars parked on both sides of the street. It's a very wide street. And there's also the area adjacent to 21920 on the, what I would call, the southwest side of it, that longish part of the triangle there that could be utilized for parking as well. I'm not sure how many cars they could put there, but certainly, any, any space like that that could be utilized can reduce the size of the parking lot and thus, the effect on the whole park area. Because losing park is not always a positive thing, but I think it can be fit in there, so.
Thank you. Counsel Whitmarsh.
Yeah, I think that this is, you know, really two separate items to consider, and I think certainly for the amount of the development itself, there's requirement of 119 parking stalls. They're actually providing 130, 11 more than required for this particular development. And so I think the parking for the park, that's a separate topic, and I think it needs to be treated separately, not as part of the development of this particular, or part of this particular proposal. And I agree with Counsel Fox, there certainly is lots of other street parking and so on. Not that that's the solution. I think there needs to be some kind of parking supply, but it is separate from this particular development proposal, and it should be treated separately.
Thank you. Counsel Qualley.
Thanks. Just to sort of reiterate what Counsel Whitmarsh says, I think they are two separate components to the application, and the application can't proceed without the solution to the parking. Further to Counsel Fox's comments, where the significant trees are in the southeast corner, as well as, there's also a First Nations memorial in the park that needs to be considered as part of the parking relocation. So there's a lot of moving parts in there, and I think, truthfully, I think if it went where the play structure is right now, that would give a really great opportunity for an upgrade of the play structure when, if, if and when that could be relocated. So I'm not sure that's the right spot for it, but I'm anxious to hear from the public at the public hearing, and then ultimately, if the development's going to proceed, it would need to proceed with that solution for the parking lot first.
Thank you. And just like to remind council that under the Point 8C, it does require that there is a 30-stall parking lot for Denny Ross Memorial Park. So prior to council's approval of fourth reading, we have to ensure that that's been done. So council does have the final say on that. As I understand, is that correct, Mr. Backen?
That's correct, your worship. This is a bit of a unique situation, and this is a former school board property where there was some park property, parking occurring on that. However, as we look at the site for redevelopment, and the school board has disposed of it, we can't impose on that site our own parking requirements, hence the requirement that it be moved to the park side. So the two, while they're concurrent, are a bit separate in terms of proceeding, because if we were to leave the cars on the former school district site, we'd have to compensate for that, and that's what we seek to avoid.
And in this way, because we have the requirement in the, on this proposal, you see that the proponent is, will be paying for the parking lot.
The construction.
The amenity, the construction of it. It's our land. So if we were not to do it, or do it in a later time, then the township taxpayers would be paying for that, if it wasn't.
It's not a condition of the zoning. This is the amenity, one of the amenities being provided.
It is a amenity, yes. That's a condition. Thank you. Okay, with that, on the referral, I'll call the question. On the referral, yeah. And the referral fails. Counsel Fox, Counsel Whitmarsh, mayor froze. Counsel Qualley, Counsel Sparrow opposed. Back to the main motion as amended. Any further discussion on the main motion as amended? Seeing none, I'll call the question on F3. And it carries with Counsel Arneson opposed. Now move on to F4. It's official community plan amendment and rezoning application number 100131, Sandhill Homes Limited, bylaw 5378, 5379. Could I have a motion, please? Counsel Fox, seconder. Counsel Whitmarsh, discussion. Counsel Qualley.
Thank you. Sorry. I'm going to support moving this to the public hearing with the condition that the lot size be adjusted prior to the public hearing to satisfy the 10,000 square foot minimum requirement.
To satisfy the requirements of the OCP?
Yes.
Okay, so Counsel Qualley moves amendment. Counsel Sparrow seconds it. Discussion on the amendment. Counsel Davis.
Just to clarify, okay, so we want to take this, before it goes to public hearing, and change it to adjust the lot sizes to 10,000 feet.
Mr. Backen, maybe you can explain.
Your worship, this is a bit of an anomaly in terms of the designation and the density. As it stands now, the area, I think, would on a gross basis accommodate the 17 lots. As you may recall, this was previously subject of a public information meeting where the proponents suggested 22 lots, and they've come back with the suggestion of 17. In that regard, they technically meet the definition for the density, but as has been pointed out, it doesn't necessarily mean it meets the technical requirements for the lot sizes. So what we're hearing this amendment to be doing, then, is to amend the lot sizes to ensure that they meet the requirements of the OCP, which is about 10,000 square feet or 930 square meters. That will in turn, then, likely reduce the lot size, reduce the number of lots probably to approximately 14. That would have to be determined prior to advancing to public hearing, so that when the public is providing council with comments, it would be on the revised lot size. So, correct, it would be a revised lot layout that would have to be produced prior to the start of the public hearing. the public hearing.
So is that legal for us to do to the proponent?
The proponent can accept that and proceed, or they can, I guess, pause or withdraw their application if they so choose. This is Council's, I guess, position in terms of if they're to entertain it. It sounds like they're wanting to make sure it complies with both requirements of the OCP, which is both lot size and density. So in answer to your question, provided that the information, information's provided prior to the start of the OCP, it is appropriate.
Okay, so it's something if you did it after the public hearing, that's no good.
It can be done after the public hearing if you're reducing density. If, however, there's other factors that could be changing the density in some way, then that could necessitate a further public hearing, but we're now just speculating.
It's better to do it before.
Any further discussion? Seeing done, I'll call a question on the amendment. It carries with Council Fox opposed. Move on to the motion as amended. Any further discussion on the motion as amended? Seeing done, I'll call a question.
This is just going to public hearing, right?
It carries with Council Arneson opposed. Okay, move on to bylaws for first, second, and third reading, and G one is Heritage Property Maintenance Standards, bylaw five three seven six and bylaw five three seven seven. Have a motion, Council Arneson moves it, seconder. Council Sparrow, discussion on G one. Seeing none, I'll call a question. Carries unanimously. Move on to G two, Langley Building Bylaw Amendment twenty eighteen, bylaw five three eight five. As Council Sparrow moves, seconder, Council Fox, discussion on G two. Seeing none. Call a question. Council Davis. Carries unanimously. Move on to, there are no bylaws for third reading, so we move on to bylaws for final adoption. I one is the general local government election bylaw amendment and information pertaining to twenty eighteen local government election bylaw five three seven one. Motion, please. Council Sparrow, seconder. Council Qualley, discussion on I one. Seeing none, call a Carries with Council Arneson opposed. Move on to I two. This is bylaw notice enforcement bylaw amendment, drinking water conservation, bylaw five three seven two. Could I have a motion, please? Council Davis, second by Council Fox. Discussion on I two. Seeing none, I'll call a question. Carries unanimously. Move on to I three, Langley Sewer Works Regulation Bylaw, bylaws five three six seven and five three seven three. Could I have a motion, please? Council Whitmarsh, seconder. Council Sparrow, discussion. Seeing none, call a question on I three. Carries unanimously. I four, Drainage Development Works Agreement bylaw Qualico Developments, bylaw five three seven zero. Motion, please. Council Sparrow, Council Qualley seconds. Discussion on I four. Seeing none. Call a question. Carries. Council Davis opposed. And I five, as a municipal community plan amendment and rezoning application one zero zero one four one, bylaws five three one zero and five three one one. Could I have a motion, please? Council Fox, seconder. Is Council Whitmarsh, discussion, I five. Seeing none, I'll call a question. Carries with Council Arneson opposed. On the development permit under I five, development permit application one zero zero eight five seven. Could I have a motion? Council Sparrow, seconder. Council Fox, discussion. Seeing none, call the question on I five. That carries unanimously. And I six, Transportation Capital Works Loan Authorization bylaw twenty eighteen, Alternative Approval Process, bylaw number five three four seven. Could I have a motion, please? Council Sparrow, Council Qualley seconds. Discussion on I six. Council Davis?
Okay. Just a quick question. How many Transportation Capital Works loans do we do? How many do we have? Like, it's, we're going to borrow that money, it's going to be spent on transportation works?
This will be spent on the railway crossings, I understand.
Okay.
We can ask Ms. Sinclair.
So, yeah.
On how many? Ms. Sinclair, the purpose of this authorization, and do you have an idea of how many, I think it was in the financial report, how many different loans? Yeah.
The number of projects in this, in this bylaw are, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, at twelve point nine million. As to the number of roads borrowing, let's see, if I can put my finger on that.
You know, maybe, maybe I'm going the wrong direction. How many of, I haven't seen one of, I haven't seen one of these Transportation Capital Works. I haven't seen one yet, I don't believe. This doesn't come up very often, does it?
Does not come up very often. I think you're asking how many times have we actually borrowed for roadworks from the transportation utility, if you will?
Yeah.
Which is different than DCC's, and I'm thinking maybe once or perhaps twice. Karen?
We had the Muffet, Muffet Overpass, and the Muffet Overpass Safety Initiatives were the most recent two.
Okay, okay. So this is, this will be the third one now. And it says here that it's going to, the maximum term is for twenty years.
Correct.
So how, how long, like, this is, are we going to use this for twenty years, or will we maybe, insight to get rid of it a little sooner, or will we amalgamate the Muffet Overpass, or like?
When we execute this borrowing, it will be for a twenty-year term, period, but there's a ten-year term after which we can decide if we want to pay it off early after ten years.
That's right. Okay, okay. I just wanted, twenty years is a long time to stretch. Well, maybe it's not. Roads last a long time. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on I six? If not, I'll call a question. Carries unanimously. Move on to I seven, rezoning community plan amendment application number one zero zero one three four and development permit application one zero zero eight three three, bylaw five two seven four, five two seven five. Council Qualley moves, second, seconder. Council Whitmarsh, discussion. Seeing none, I'll call a question on I seven. It carries with Council Arneson, Council Davis opposed. Mr. Backen, the development permit requires a separate motion?
That's correct, Your Worship.
Okay. Moved by Council Fox, seconder, Council Qualley, and discussion on the development permit. Seeing none, I'll call the question. It carries with Council Arneson and Council Davis opposed. And that's it for bylaws. We will now move on to the mayor and council report. So good evening, everyone. It's good to see everyone out tonight. It's been a busy, what is it, three or four weeks since we've met last, with a lot of other, a lot of other things in between, so it's been a while. The kickoff event for the first annual Fort Langley Jazz and Arts Festival took place on Saturday, May the twelfth. It was exciting to hear the details about all the live jazz, music and performers, art walk and demonstrations, tribute to Motown dance, and an educational workshop and jam that'll be taking place in Fort Langley July twenty eighth, twenty ninth, to the twenty ninth, and promises to be a lot of fun. So hopefully, everybody takes part in that. On Monday, May fourteenth, was the twenty-fifth Annual Langley Environmental Partners AGM with a speaker presentation on wild native pollinators of British Columbia. And I learned that there are, I think, four hundred and fifty species of bees in British Columbia. So I actually learned some.
One makes honey.
No, one makes honey, but it's from China. The honeybee, there's only one that really makes a lot of honey, and that's been imported from China. So there you go. I learned a lot. There was a question from Dr. Whitmarsh, and I passed. Did I pass?
There you go.
Thank you. Thank you. On Thursday, May seventeenth, the invited speaker for the Coffee Conversations event hosted by the Greater Langley Chamber of Commerce, and I'd like to thank everyone who attended and offered input, and we had some great dialogue. And I think these are still going on with a few more at the chamber, if you want to take part with some other people from our community. On Thursday, May seventeenth, was also the SASSI Awards to recognize student youth who embody the Rotary Club's motto of service above self. Congratulations to all the impressive nominees and winners this year, and we have, we do have some amazing youth in our community, and congratulations to all of them. On Friday, May eighteenth, was the Mankind Charitable Gala, Shades of Love in Vancouver. It was a sold-out event this year to raise money for children across the developing world, and it was great to see Kevin and Chief Gabriel there, who gave a welcome opening to the event. So all the way to Vancouver, and there they were. Sunday, May nineteenth, was the Fort Langley Beer and Food Festival, another successful event which hosted hundreds and locals and tourists for a day of beer and food sampling. And I think this is the best selfie I've ever taken.
Is that a selfie of the beer?
That's right. On Monday, it was a great event. I think it was well, it's kind of sold out. They doubled it this year, and they sold out. It's a great event. On Monday, May twenty-first, was the May Day Parade and Queen's Breakfast in Fort Langley. This year, we celebrated the ninety-sixth May Day. The celebration is an amazing legacy in our community, and there's a lot of fun and tradition involved. I'd like to congratulate and thank all of the organizers, the volunteers, and those that make this annual family event a success year after year. And the star of the show, I think, was that golden retriever, because I was walking by that car, everybody wanted the golden retriever. So it was perfect. Wednesday, May twenty-third, was the Township's Annual Farm Tour, and this year's theme focused on the Ecological Services Initiative. The Langley Sustainable Agriculture Foundation has been working with farmers on a pilot project to maintain second growth forests along the streamside to protect and enhance the natural areas of Bertrand Creek. Three farms are participating in the program, actually, more than three farms, I think there's a dozen, but we visited three farms who are participating in the program and are at various stages of progress. We're spotlighted, and we'd like to thank the farmers for opening the doors to us. It was a great, great tour, filled up a large bus, and it was really interesting to get out there in your rubber boots and dodge the cow pies. David would know all about that. On Wednesday, May twenty-third, was the bi-annual graduation ceremony of the New Directions English Language School, where, and while there, I met men and women from all over the world, including Russia, China, Korea, all over, who have made major achievements in their speaking, listening, reading, and writing. So a lot of new immigrants come to this program. It's in the city of Langley, but it gets people from the township, from Surrey, from all over, who come and improve their English. I was pleased to provide a welcome on Thursday, May twenty-fourth, at the Shepherd Valley Church, which hosted the Provincial Church Convention from May twenty-fourth to May twenty-seventh. On Thursday, May twenty-fourth, was also the Canadian Blood Services Blood Donor Recognition Event at the Langley Event Center. Each year, it takes hundreds of thousands of blood and stem cells donors, volunteers, and community groups and partners to ensure that those who need blood, blood products, stem cells, organs, or tissues receive them. This event celebrated an extraordinary group of people for the commitment to the success of the program, and they awarded, you know, twenty-five donations, fifty, seventy-five, a hundred, it was amazing, and two hundred, how people are committed to this very important thing that we do, and encourage everyone to, if they can, to give blood. On Friday, May the twenty-fifth, was the Walk in the Spirit of Reconciliation in Fort Langley. Langley Churches for Reconciliation is a voluntary group working to bring about reconciliation here in our local communities. This was the third annual walk in the spirit of reconciliation to mark the anniversary of the Truth and Reconciliation Commission of Canada's Calls to Action. So I participated in the first night. We did about a four-mile walk, and then they went on for a couple more days after that. So a great, great, I think, thing to do in the spirit of reconciliation. On Saturday, May twenty-sixth, was the Annual Italian Fraser Valley Society Banquet at the Langley Event Center, where a lot of amazing Italian food was served, and a bit of wine was enjoyed, and a donation was made to Aaron McDonald of the Langley Memorial Hospital Foundation by the society. And I tell you, there is a lot of food at those, and it's an awesome event to go to every year. On Monday, May twenty-eighth, the Langley Memorial Hospital Emergency Department made an impressive announcement regarding the infusion of donor monies. The funds raised for the new department will help decrease wait times and new state-of-the-art equipment and increase staff at the hospital. So in the picture, Phil Jockman, who's the chair of the foundation, and Vivian Smith, who's the executive director there, and what was really interesting is this new emergency ward that, or department that will be built at the Langley Memorial Hospital. Their fundraising has been so successful, they're adding an MRI to that, and that's worth millions of dollars. And we really want to thank the donors in our community who've stepped forward, and there's still more to go, and this is really the announcement to put it out to the public. But we've had some very generous donations, and thank you.
Phil's the chair of the campaign, not the foundation.
And chair of the campaign. That's, oh, sorry. I've been corrected. Phil Jockman is the chair of the fundraising campaign, not of the foundation. That's Deanna, isn't it? Deanna Horn, yeah. On Monday, May twenty-eighth, was the second open house with B.C. Housing in Steppingstone regarding the quality and supportive housing proposal. Residents attended, and Langley RCP Superdome Power and panel guests answered questions regarding the facility. On Wednesday, May thirtieth, the Greater Langley Chamber of Commerce, U forty, Leaders of Tomorrow hosted Lunch and Learn for Young Entrepreneurs Under the Age of Forty. Guest speaker was Austin Simpson, or sorry, Austin, it's not Simpson, Austin, I forgot his last name, no, it's mine. Did, that's terrible. Did an excellent job presenting. I was happy to attend, even though I did make, didn't make the age criteria. I got to thank my writer for that one. Spencer, Austin Spencer, thank you. And he's a mortgage broker, former wrestler, professional wrestler, and football player, and gave a very inspirational, motivational speech, and it was great to be there. So really nice to see young entrepreneurs, and the place was sold out. On Thursday, May thirty-first, I participated in a discussion panel with Joy TV as part of the Age Friendly Series. We discussed an array of topics specific to the Township's role as an age-friendly community, and this will air sometime in the fall. On Thursday, May thirty-first, I also attended the B.C. Sports Hall of Fame banquet in Vancouver. One of the inductees was the pioneer nineteen hundred to nineteen eighteen Roslyn Ladies Ice Hockey Team, and there was a daughter of one of the players there to receive that. So nineteen hundred, and they won the championship several times. Their uniforms were quite interesting, down to the ice skirts and tops they were playing hockey in. But hockey's been around for women a long time, and that hockey player who played on, from Vancouver, who played on the national team, was there to present the medal, so in the Olympics.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, the one from Vancouver Police. She was there in uniform, presented, I just can't recall her name right now, presented the medal to them. So, pretty cool. On, where are we here? On Saturday, June second, was the opening ceremony for the Memory Grove in Fort Langley. I'd like to thank all of the volunteers, staff, organizers, organizers, and contributors for making this special project such a success. If you've not had a chance to tour the Grove, I'd encourage everyone to take a walk through. It's an amazing initiative by the community to plant horse chestnut trees and cedar trees, which are the same ones that you see in Fort Langley along Glover Road, and it's in the park right next to Bedford Landing and between the golf course and Bedford Landing. On Saturday, June second, was also Lightning Hawks RCA CS Annual Ceremony Review at Lord Tweedsmere Secondary School. These young cadets take great pride in displaying their skills when it comes to drill competitions and all the things that they do. They're based right here at the Langley Airport, and they're just, it's about a hundred and fifty cadets take part in this and do a great job, and just good to see those young people show their stuff. On Monday, June fourth, was Langley Seniors of the Year Renounced. Congratulations to Marilyn Fisher and her husband, Jim Simming. And it was a great event. On Monday, June fourth, was also the Walnut Grove Secondary School Scholarship Awards. Congratulations to all the scholarship recipients and to those graduating this year. On Tuesday, June fifth, was the Lower Mainland Law Enforcement Torch Run for Special Olympics at the Langley RCP Detachment. I'd like to thank all who donated to and support this wonderful cause and its law enforcement agencies from throughout the Lower Mainland and British Columbia that support the torch run. And we had a good contingent out there from, from local RCP, Delta, Vancouver, and with our Special Olympians. The annual seniors tee was also held on Tuesday, June fifth, as part of the Township Senior Week activities, and I'd like to thank Council Arneson for attending on my behalf and bringing greetings to them. And then seniors week runs June one to June seven. On Friday, June eighth, was the annual Relay for Life at McLeod Athletic Park. There was a little bit of rain, but that didn't dampen anyone's spirits. The turnout was still very good, and monies raised for the Canadian Cancer Society reached a hundred and eleven thousand, four hundred and ninety-eight dollars. So thank you to all the donors, volunteers who made that happen. The annual Langley Animal Protection Society Wine and Cheese Event was also hosted on Friday, June the eighth. I'd like to thank Jane Nelson and the staff at LAPS for a great evening, and it was good to recognize all the people that support LAPS. On Saturday, June ninth, was the Brookswood Festival Days, where several businesses showcased their goods and services. I made an appearance there in the morning and looked around. It looked like a lot of people were starting to show up and have a good time. On Saturday, June ninth, was also Langley Environmental Heroes Awards. Winners were Eliza Park in the youth category, Ted Lightfoot in the individual category, and Ted, where are you? Oh, he's right there. Yep. Congratulations. And the Nickelmeckel Enhancement Society in the organization and business category. I'd like to congratulate all of the nominees and the recipients and thank them. And also, there was a special category created this year for Reese Griffiths, who had passed away, and made a special presentation for him, too. His name will also be on the plaque. So that was the last few weeks. On May the ninth, eleventh, was the annual Lower Mainland Local Government Association meeting, and that was in Whistler? Whistler, yeah. And June one to three was the Federation of Canadian Municipals Conference in Halifax, and several members of council were at both of those. Coming up, we have Canada Day on July the first in Fort Langley, Langley Centennial Museum, and Willoughby Community Park. So lots to do. I think there's a parade in all the Grove, and lots going on on Canada Day, lots for everybody to see. So at this point, if there's anything that anything that council would like to bring up, that's been a long report. There's a long time between meetings. So, Council Davis.
Well, it's a hard act to follow. You were very busy. I wasn't quite so busy. I went to the Vanguard School Graduation, and there was 25 grads, and it's always a special one I like to go to. And Aidan Ruskinzki, I have no end saying that wrong, he received the Township of Langley Scholarship, and it was a good graduation.
Good, thank you. Okay, so with that, we'll move on to other business, and I'll just clear the queue here. And Council Qualley, you have a kind of other business here. Your mic is on.
Thank you. As we discussed earlier tonight, my notice of motion was, therefore be it resolved that staff make the matter, which is the truck route designation report, a priority, and provide a report prior to or at the meeting on July 23rd, 2018.
Thank you. Is there a secondary? Council Whitmarsh seconds. Discussion. Seeing none, I'll call the question. Oh, sorry, I popped it up late. Council Whitmarsh.
Yeah, thank you. I know we discussed this a little bit earlier, but, you know, I do think that this is a good thing for us to do. There's been lots of conversation, lots of emails that we've received from people about this particular topic. And so I think this is asking staff to provide a report. It's not the definitive, final report. It's not a report that comprises all other, all information and that nothing else could ever be added. This is a report as to where we are up to this point, and to provide that by the end of July, which is our final meeting of the summer, so that we all have that information available to us and can reflect and think about it, and certainly as we move into the fall, these kinds of decisions will be important. So this is just a report up to where we're at today. I think it's really good to do that. It's good to get all of the information. It's not necessarily the final bit of information, but it's where we are today, and so I think that's a really positive thing for the community, and I certainly support it. Thank you. Council Davis?
Yeah, just maybe a question to the mover. I just comment first. I'm just wondering why we would, like, what is the motivation behind this to get it prior to summer break? And why would we not, like, yeah, what's the motivation to get it so that we can, you know, get staff to give us a report without all the rest of the information involved? Just a question.
Council Qualley, your mic's on.
Yeah, thanks. I think, you know, we talked about this earlier. It's a matter of getting information before the break, so we have things that we can review before it goes to the break. One of my concerns was that if we don't have adequate information prior to the break, and we're trying to jam everything into two meetings, like receiving all the information, or asking for additional information, asking for two meetings, that takes us to the end of the council term, and then before we have adequate information, it's suddenly it's January and February. So the motivation was around getting the appropriate information that is available to us sooner rather than later. And then if we have decisions to make or questions to ask, or public hearings to schedule, we can start thinking about the next steps. But I'm anxious to get the information, and, you know, the staff report will be a compilation, I hope, of all of the things that have come in, the information that's come in from both the Ministry of Transportation and from TransLink, as well as our staff input. So, yeah, I'm anxious to get some more information.
Thank you. Just maybe a question through Mayor Frost, Mark, Mr. Backham. I'm concerned that when we get our report next, or in July 22nd, was it July 22nd? When we get our report, we'll have had it for, we get it on a Thursday. What are the chances of it bringing, being brought forward on the table and then making a vote on it? That's a reality, isn't it? If somebody, if a member of council brings it onto the table?
I think you're asking procedurally, if there's a information, it's in the council package on the Thursday, it may have recommendations. If there is amendments or further direction from council, whether it be by notice of motion or amendment to the report itself, that can occur at the council table.
So actually, in fact, it could, it could, there could be a decision made that Monday night.
But it's not bylaw?
Not bylaw.
So just to clarify.
That's correct. First of all, there's a direction in terms of what the bylaw should look like, and there's the bylaw. So I interpret your question to be, could council give direction as to what a bylaw could look like prior to the bylaw coming forward? They certainly could. Council tonight could say, bring us a bylaw on the length of carpet in pink homes. They could give us that direction, but we'd have to bring back the bylaw.
Okay, so I'm just concerned that we're, you know, if we get this, if we get an update, I'm just thinking, what's two more months? Generally, when the break comes, I shouldn't say this in front of the election, but generally, I don't remember anything. And I think that the first meeting in September, that would be a better time to recharge myself anyhow. Okay, thank you.
Refresh your memory. Council Arnesson?
I think that should be a test for electability, whether or not you can remember what happened in the last part of the term. Thank you, Your Worship. I think my challenge actually in supporting this is to try and intuit, as I think Counselor Davis was trying to get at, what the intention was. For me, generally, when I read a notice of motion, it has more context, so that I can understand what is, you know, creating the imperative of why we're moving forward. So after tonight's presentation and also delegations, I think I have a better understanding. But my concern is really that if we have reports that we now know are coming in, I'm not necessarily sure that it's going to be so helpful to have staff then put the pedal to the metal in order to get something together. I could be wrong. Maybe there's something that's imminent. But, you know, just sort of the validity of what we're looking at and seeing all of it together, to me, that would make a lot more sense than doing it in this way, whereby a very specific and kind of artificial date, although I do understand at least that part of the intention, that it gives us something to think about over the summer and leading into the fall. But I'm personally not persuaded that that's so necessary. I want to think that these reports are going to require the fullness of time that they do, and that staff will be working diligently on this, but I'm not going to attach an artificial date to it, because I don't think that there is any particular reason, from my perspective, that it is that necessary to be quite so expedient. So I won't be supporting this.
Thank you. Council Qualley?
Thanks. I mean, I hardly think the pedal's to the metal. This has been two years. We've been talking about this for a long time, so anyhow, support it, don't support it. I'm just looking for more information. We'll get the information when it comes, but, yeah, I hardly think this is being forced, or there's pedal to the metal. There's, I mean, this has been going on for a long time. So anyhow, hopefully, we can get the information from staff in a timely fashion and decide what we're going to do with the information when we get it.
Mr. Backen?
Just a point of clarification, Your Worship, as to timing. As we look back at the history of this matter, there was some direction provided by council. There was some referrals to other agencies. Those agencies have partly reported back, I suppose, is where we're at, and there's some contention, of course, in terms of what the potential uses are. As you pointed out, once we actually formulate our direction, it'll be necessary then to go forth to the bylaws. And as you've been pointing out, the timing of that will take some time. I suspect what's going to happen, or we're going to attempt to see happen, is to get some direction from council, given the information that's either been received or is forthcoming from the Ministry of Transportation through the Urban Systems Report. With that, we'd hope to actually then likely communicate and dialogue with the other authorities, which again, will take some time. But council's direction and what we seek to achieve will be important, but whatever that direction may be, we're going to have to formulate that into a bylaw. And that's still going to take, I think, several months before that can actually come back at the bylaw stage, because there's a process associated with that. But I think council's direction will be helpful and might provide some clarity as to the issue as this thing goes forward.
Thank you. Seeing no further discussion, so I'm going to call the question on M1. And it carries with Council Arnesson, Council Davis opposed. Is there any other business? Council Fox?
You're not going to get away that easily.
Oh, I was trying.
Actually, it's really great.
Welcome back, by the way.
Welcome back. Thank you. Thank you. I missed you. That was tongue-in-cheek, girls. There might be some guy nurses, too. But actually, it's very appropriate. Yes, four of us were at FCM in Halifax, a very functional conference for local municipal councillors. Listen to all of the party leaders, national party leaders. We won't give you any evaluations on the 20 minutes that they spoke to us. It was rather interesting. But when you go to conferences like this, you always have takeaways. And I've been accused of being an uncaring person about persons' health over the last few years, I guess, but today I'm going to care, okay? I just want to care, and I want to care because there's nurses here, and I want to care because there's a whole bunch of people going to run for council, and they've got a big issue on their hands. And at the conference, we were given this particular nice piece of literature, and I strongly suggest that citizens of the Township of Langley make themselves aware of this. It's actually the roadmap for Canadian local governments with respect to cannabis legalization. I got onto council in 2005. One of the things that perked my interest at that particular time was a mushroom barn that was on 16th Avenue, which was directly north of my house, and compromised my standard of life and those of my neighbors in rural South Langley. Well, for many of you, you don't probably realize, but the second-largest grow operation is in rural South Langley. I think, I can't remember, maybe Mr. Backen can help me, how big it is, but it's acres and acres and acres of glass. And it's creating a problem for the neighbors, not me this time, although there's lots of grow operations in rural South Langley in my neighborhood. But this particular operation called Canopy, what's it called? Canopy Growth is compromising the lifestyle of a whole neighborhood. And if you want to visit it, it's at 264th and 4th Avenue. You can go over there. You go over the hill, look over the hill. There's the Canopy Growth. There's the greenhouse. And you don't want to be living by it. The problem that we have in, and it's clearly pointed out in this particular document, and is the fact that the Ministry of Agriculture in the province of British Columbia said it's okay to grow marijuana on rural ALR lands. And it is not okay to grow marijuana on rural ALR lands. They have no, and it clearly points out that they have, there's so many regulations that have not been defined. There's no teeth. There's a myriad of issues associated with, and these people are experiencing it day in and day out. Ironically, here's a letter from the Township of Spillamachine. What's it on? Can we please get a UBCM, and I'm hoping the people that are going to UBCM, I'm not going, will support encouraging, forcing, whatever, the Ministry of Agriculture to relook at how they're approaching this particular issue. Seventy-five percent of our property in this township is in rural ALR lands, and these are small communities. City of Langley has one. We supported it today. There's dozens of these communities that are very concerned. And I think we should all be concerned. It is a health issue, a serious health issue. So we've received a letter from May and Ron Leeper, and I've got a couple of suggestions here. And I'd like to make a motion that we send a letter to the Ministry of Agriculture ourselves, expressing our concerns and requesting an immediate meeting with the minister to discuss how this is impacting the life of our citizens on a day-to-day basis. This is not just a smell. It's related to light. It's related to air quality. And as was said in here, in the email from the Leapers today, none of the jurisdictional agencies seem to have any teeth in what they can apply to try and get these regulations in order. So it's really creating a problem. So that's the first thing. I think the second thing is, and I go through you, Your Worship, to Mr. Backen, if we could have someone on staff, maybe, shepherd these people through a FERB referral. FERB, for anybody who doesn't know it, is a Farm Industry Review Board. And actually, in the mushroom barn, I actually personally took a Farm Industry Review Board. It costs you $100. Complaint to the review board, and they actually listened. Unfortunately, in that circumstance, and this may be the case in this one, we had some deaths which occurred and shut it down, the mushroom barn down. But there may be health issues with people that are working in these conditions and under this glass. So what is best practice in a marijuana grow operation? Does anybody know? Nobody knows, because they're too new. Nobody's had the experience. And the other thing that I would like to see is if we could in some way, shape, or form, I know these people have put in complaints to Metro Vancouver, who is responsible for air quality, but definitely, if we could in some way have our staff, or we could support these people in encouraging Metro Vancouver to actually take a stand on the air quality issues related to the neighborhood. So I'm not sure, maybe through you to Mr. Backen.
Two motions, or one was two parts. One is to write a letter to the Minister of Agriculture, and the other is to refer this to Metro Vancouver air quality. The email that you got is on distribution. So I don't know if that's, Mr. Backen, can you help out and how best to do the motions?
Your Worship, I think there's two components. Let's send a letter to advocate for the issues that have been raised to the minister and perhaps arrange a meeting. And as well, the secondary one seems to be assist in a FERB application and a assist in a referral to Metro Vancouver air quality people.
Two motions. So let's deal with those separately.
I'm prepared to make those motions, yes.
Okay, so the first one, if you want to make the motion, I'll get a secondary. First one is the letter. Council Whitmarsh seconds. Discussion on that. Council Qualley on the letter, Mr. Agriculture?
Yeah, so just to follow up on Counsel Fox's point, at the LMLGA this year, at the Lower Mainland Local Government Association Conference, there was a motion that was endorsed by the attendees, and the motion is, whereas legalized cannabis has the potential to displace traditional food crop cultivation, and it goes on and on, therefore be it resolved that the provincial government be requested to prohibit or place restrictions on the use of the ALR land for cannabis cultivation. So this was already endorsed by LMLGA to be forwarded to UBCM for work with the provincial government. So this is on the move, but I think anything we can do to sort of bolster that argument is necessary. The way the motion starts, it talks about our food, displacement of food crop cultivation. And truthfully, I read the same package that you brought home from FCM, and there isn't a single mention in there of food security. And last time I checked, growing weed was way more profitable than growing bell peppers. So I'm really concerned about what this is going to do to the agricultural community here in the township and displacing our food and creating some, a new level of food insecurity here in the township. So I'll support Counselor Fox's motion, but I just wanted to be clear that other municipalities and LMLGA are already working on this with UBCM.
Thank you. Okay, I'll call the question on the letter. Carries unanimously to Counsel Fox. I'll just get your mic back on.
The second one, I'll refer to Mr. Backen's words with respect to the FERB and the Metro Vancouver air quality referrals.
Secondary. Counsel Sparrow, seconds. Discussion on that. Counsel Davis?
So, could you just maybe explain what'll happen at FERB? The Township of Langley will go to FERB?
No, well, no, no. Individuals have to go there, but it's like anything else. I mean, you know, people need support. They need to know how to do it, and maybe just some encouragement to do it. So I think that, I'm not suggesting that these people couldn't do it on their own, and I would strongly encourage them to do that. But if we, as a township, could support them in that in any way, shape, or form, maybe it's just helping them through the process, that would be the, we won't, they have to put the $100 down. That has to be come from their checkbook, not ours. But there are, you know, there are things you can say in a FERB application that are pretty critical and are good, strong points.
Because I would question whether we should, as a township, be encouraging somebody to, you know, it's easy enough to say, well, there's your options, but to encourage them and support them to go to a hearing, like FERB. I understand, but maybe the more we know about it, the better we are, so, yeah. I understand, but maybe the more we know about it, the better we are, so, yeah.
The only other thing I'd say is FERB works on, you know this, best practice. There's no established best practice on growing marijuana because it hasn't been done in a controlled environment. So one of the things that, hopefully through FERB, is they can establish what does best practice look like. And, you know, use of scrubbers for venting and these sorts of things are all part of what's best practice. So you're trying to, in a way, force FERB, the Farm Industry Review Board, to do some work on this.
Yeah, okay. Okay, I'll be supporting this. I just want to say that it is a, it's not a new industry, Council Fox. It's been around for a long time. And there's a lot of practices out there, and there are, and there is technology. And I think, however, it's new under the new guidelines in that the federal government is now permitting these, or these operations. And that, being new, there's a lot of technology that has to catch up, and I believe it's out there. And again, having some assistance from other, from FERB or from Metro Vancouver might encourage them to explore those technologies because, like it or not, this is not going to go away. This is a new industry. It's here. It's here to stay. And what we can do to make it tolerable, just like the mushroom barns, I think they made great strides on how they accommodated that, but it is agriculture product, no different than raising hops or grapes for wine or whatever else that may be, or horticulture, which may be considered non-food. It's here in Canada to stay. We just need to make sure that the quality of life of those that live next to them is not impacted. And I think that's really the thrust of this, of these motions. So I'll call the question on. And it carries unanimously. And other business? Council Arnesson?
Yes, thank you, worship. I have two notices of motion that I'd like to impart. So the first one is actually about agriculture. Whereas the Township of Langley endorsed the agricultural viability strategy in 2013, and whereas the strategy underlines the importance of the protection of agricultural lands for farming and farm-related uses, and whereas council is receiving increased volumes for development proposals to remove and/or alienate lands from the LR, thereby reducing overall agricultural capacity and driving up agricultural land prices due to speculation, and whereas the strategy identifies the objective of protecting agricultural land for agricultural purposes in the Township of Langley, and identified short-term actions to complement this objective to include the implementation of an agricultural impact assessment process to be completed at the expense of the applicant and to be conducted by a qualified agrologist or equivalent in order to address ways that an application for exclusion, non-farm use or subdivision is a benefit to agriculture, therefore be it resolved that council direct staff to utilize the existing criteria within the strategy as a framework for the AIA policy and that the resulting draft form a presentation to council prior to consideration for formal adoption.
And your second one?
Notice of motion, I thought.
I know, but she has a second notice of motion.
Number two.
Oh, sorry.
Whereas it is necessary and desirable to create efficient and cost-effective opportunities to facilitate the Township of Langley's 2013 Housing Action Plan with respect to the provision of affordable housing options in the Township of Langley, and whereas the province and federal governments have now defined and articulated a number of opportunities for local governments to receive funding through the National Housing Strategy as well as the province's Community Housing Fund and Housing Hub Initiative in order to receive funds to facilitate this purpose, and whereas provisions for partnering with community service groups, charities and nonprofit organizations, faith-based and others enhances the opportunities to build the required income-sensitive or below-market housing, which is critically required, but there are current challenges arising from the inflexible statutory framework of the Income Tax Act, which have negatively impacted the ability of nonprofits and registered charities wishing to undertake such development, which statutory framework has resulted in an inordinate barrier to uptake of these opportunities bought about by the arcane tax rules that require extraordinary legal agreements, which effectively drain the resources and capacity of the relevant partners. Therefore, be it resolved that council endorse this resolution with an accompanying correspondence to be forwarded to UBCM, FCM, the federal government, and the federal finance department, most specifically requesting that the relevant agencies review and amend the Income Tax Act and its associated policies in order to reflect the need to remove those barriers as outlined in a white paper on affordable housing as presented at the BC Nonprofit Housing Rent Event in May of 2018, in order to enhance the potential for new affordable housing initiatives by nonprofits and charities within the township.
Okay. Thank you. Council Qualley?
No, sorry.
Other business? Okay. Is there any other business?
Termination.
Council Fox moves termination. Council Davis seconds. All those in favor? Pose carry. We'll take about five minutes, and then we'll start the public hearing.